Call the meeting to order, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic or the just stands, one nation, under God. The invisible, the whether to address this law.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. All right, we do have a, somebody wishing to address the school board on non-agenda items. So I'm just going to read a brief, just that you have five minutes. And we've got a timer, she's got a sign that gives you a minute and 30 seconds, not to make you nervous. And I'll just sort of summarize, just keep your comments, not talking about anybody's specific personnel issues. And like I said, we'll just, we'll give you five minutes, come up and say your name and your address, and then we'll give you five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Nyarakshol, I'm from South Sudan. I did this as a part of my assignment for Southeast Tech, I'm taking a school over there. So my professor really thought the idea was good, that's why I need to come and present it to you guys. And I see it in my community and affect a lot of students. So I wrote the letter first for the school board, but I did not get any response from the school board, then I wrote it to the mayor. So this is part of the letter that I wrote to the mayor, this is what I've got to read. So my name is Nyarakshol, I'm from South Sudan, I moved to United States in 2009, and I have been living here in Sioux Falls for over 13 years. I'm married and I have four kids, all of my children were born here in US. Both my husband and I have bachelor degree back home in Africa. As a member of immigrant community and concerned mother, I'm writing to bring attention to a topic that important to me and my community. My family and, my family and I have lived experience with this, and I feel strongly about it. Our kids get to sign automatically for English Language Learner, which is ELL, just because my husband and I speak additional language beside English. Attending these classes require my children to be taken out of their other classes. Require my children to be taken out of other classes that are also important to their growth and learning, like math and science. Unfortunately, when this happened, our children are missing out on learning this important subject. All of my children have learned English at home, and they grew up here. And I, they grew up, they grew up here and have learned English since the day they were born. At this time, we do not feel like ELL classes are necessary. We feel it is important for kids to attend their regular classes unless testing has shown that they need extra services. Respectfully, I would like to request that, or encourage the local school to review the student individually, to give if they really need the ELL classes or not. My children are comfortable with the English language and do not need these classes as much, I feel they need other classes to succeed in school and beyond. I believe less students in ELL classes would also elevate the load of work for this, for this teacher. And also help their main course instructor to more effectively build relationship with our children and assist them to grow in their learning. I appreciate the time and the effort the school board put onto protecting our children and giving them the opportunity to learn. I hope you can encourage the school board to consider this change, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So with, we don't respond during public input, it's just, so just, I didn't want you to think that anymore, since you hadn't been here before, so we just listen and take in. What I would recommend is you talk to your teacher and your principal at your building, so you can get more information as to why this actually does occur. It's mandated that is the ELL, how it's handled in some way in the school, but they can give you more specifics on that and so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We do not have any persons wishing to address the school board on agenda items, we'll move on to approval of minutes of our meeting on October 5th, 2022. Can I get a motion in a second, please? Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed same sign, that motion passes. We have no new conflicts of interest, so move on to item eight, approval of the consent agenda, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Go move.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed same sign, that passes. And we are on to the reports of the president, the first one is academic program update, community health worker.
Hello, thank you. I didn't know I was going first, I was looking at the agenda and I thought I was back at the end there, so I'm happy to go ahead and proceed with the function here.
We moved through the first several items very quickly.
Very quickly, okay, perfect. My name is Angela Landine, and I am the new program director for Southeast Tech in our new community health worker program. And over here, I have a few of my students who have come just to lend support to myself, but to also just be supporting the program. Very happy to be here, they're in the area, so if you don't mind, I'll just kind of continue. I'm going to bring this over here, even though I am quite loud, you probably could hear me even. So just to kind of go into what a community health worker is, this is really the biggest question I'm getting from a lot of people because it's so brand new, nobody has heard of it. But this is the definition from the American Public Health Association, and the APHA is our, kind of our largest public health quasi-professional association. And so a lot of policies come through APHA. But really, in a nutshell, it is a frontline public health worker, and they're also the trusted members of the community. They have an understanding of the community and are able to be, really, I think of it as a bridge. And that's, you can see there in the Venn diagram, you got your community health workers, you have the healthcare and social service systems, and then you have the community in which they work. Now, community doesn't have to just be a geographic area, community can be HIV community, it could be LGBTQ community, okay? So it doesn't have to just be a geographic place. But the people that we're putting into these roles know that community and are able to connect them to services. So in South Dakota, like I said, I have a little bit of a timeline we can go through too, but just to kind of give you the scope of work for CHW, and this is South Dakota specific. We're looking for these new CHWs to be health system navigators and resource coordinators, that is really the biggest part to their scope of work. Also, health promotion and coaching. We want to be able to have this person help their client, make those long-term behavior changes to hopefully come out with better health outcomes. And when you think of it, you go to the clinic, you go to your practitioner, you might get a care plan. Say you have diabetes, you get your care plan, you know what you're supposed to do. Well, unfortunately, there's no time in the day for that practitioner, the nurses to follow up with their patients. So that is where the community health worker comes in to kind of take that baton and then be able to make sure that that care plan is being coordinated and followed, and then also ensuring that all of the needed things that they might need before they get back to see their practitioner, they get those resources they need, okay? And then also the health education, you know, they're going to make sure that that diabetes, they understand how to control and manage that diabetes, making sure that they're checking their sugars, they know that they need to be eating better, healthier, exercising a little, not drinking so much alcohol and smoking, some of these precursors, risk factors for the pre, or the diabetes. So our titles we have in South Dakota is, we have a certificate level CHW, and like I said, this is also brand new. At least for Southeast Tech, it is brand new for us. We're working toward having more of a formal definition of the CHW certification, and we are working on that right now as a group, but again, we will have this as a voluntary certification in the future. We also have community health representatives. Now, this is going to be mostly with IHS, different IHS functions. And many people don't know this, but we've had CHRs, and we call them community health representatives. We have had CHRs in the state for some 60, 70 years. We just never got to put in those community health workers and to grow it. So I don't know if you can see this, I can kind of go through this a little bit. So like I said, we are brand new starting this semester in 2022, but all of this work really started a long time ago. I mean, gosh, it's already seven years ago. So in 2015, Department of Health knew that we needed to kind of look at this landscape. We're a very rural state, and really, in many places even frontier, it's even past rural. We know we want to have these community health workers in all of these little small towns and places, being able to connect those services to their clients or their patients. So this started in 2015, they did environmental scan, from that, we found that, yes, we absolutely do need to push forward the CHW work. It's been going on in other states, and we were really one of the last states to kind of put it together, which I'm not sure why, but we are way ahead of the game even before that now. So now we have, kind of getting into 2019, CHW services now have been covered by Medicaid for free, fee-for-service reimbursement. We were one of the first three states to actually get that to go right away, get that Medicaid coverage out of all those other states that had already been doing the CHW certificate work for years and decades. We were one of the top three to knew that we had to get that Medicaid, finally have a grant through the CDC, and this is coming from the COVID funding, the $9 billion we got from the COVID funding. Some of that came toward the CHW work in 2021, and we're calling it the Health Disparities Grant through CDC. CDC said every state who doesn't have this, we are now, so since 2021, we've really been moving on it pretty quickly. So job outlook, like I said, it's brand new, not a lot of people know about it, but I think as we get out there and more CHWs graduate, and they're out in the world doing what they should be doing and doing their great work, more people will know about it. Hopefully, you know, the whole idea with this is, we want to keep people, not only making them understand their risk factors and the disease and chronic disease, and help them to mitigate or abate those things, but the idea is we want to make sure that these patients or clients are not going in and out of the emergency room. And that is still a huge problem. And we actually had a, kind of a nice success story. We have a CHW up in Watertown area, in the lake area, and one of the ER docs had actually called the CHW and said, I have a gal who's coming in here all the time, she really doesn't need to be coming to the ER. She comes in with some urinary tract infections and some other issues, but really, there's nothing wrong with her enough to be in the ER this much. CHW went out there, was trying to talk to her, the lady did not want her to come in, and all in all, they found out that the woman was a hoarder. So she was embarrassed, she didn't want the home care workers to come in and see her place. CHW said, don't worry about it, we can talk outside, weather's nice. Well, all in all, she found out that the woman didn't have plumbing, she didn't have running water and plumbing working in the house, and thus, that's why she was having all of these issues because she was not able to bathe properly. Got her set up with a plumber, came over, fixed it all, got her set up with a primary care doctor that she liked and could talk to, and no more ER visits. So kind of big picture of it. So kind of going into the workforce a little bit here, we have 84 that are already established CHR positions in the state from our nine tribal nations. And then we have also 84 new positions that we're looking at, and this is going to be in the medical clinical organizations. We have 20 community-based organizations, and also the EMS, the ambulances are also cross-training, which totally makes sense. And we make them take first aid because that person, that CHW, might be the only person in that little community that knows first aid and can help before ambulance gets there. So these are some of our sites, just in the Sioux Falls kind of area. These are approved providers, we're ready to fill more CHW, CHR spots. You can see there's quite a few. All over the state, we have about 60 partners that we're going to be putting the CHWs and CHRs into. So our own specific program, like I said, this is our first semester, we have six courses. Over this accelerated schedule, they had four classes in their eight weeks, and then they also had, now they have two classes in this last eight weeks. I'm probably going to maybe change that to have three and three because we're kind of learning as we're going what's been working well and not. But so far, it's just amazing to me, the range of students we have. We have them from the mid-20s up into the mid-50s. We have people that have gone to school 20 years ago with an associate's degree, some with bachelor's degree, some without. So we really have a wide range of people who are interested in this. And really, the biggest part to it is they love, I think, I think they love what they do and they cannot wait to go out into the community and help people, they just have that innate need to be able to, to help. And so this is just a little bit more of a view of the program courses that we have. Now, at Southeast Tech, we actually, we developed all of our own curriculum, just straight from page one, we kind of got all of this together. And I believe it was, you know, it was leadership saying, we didn't want to kind of follow what Minnesota West and maybe some of the other established community health worker certificate programs were. We wanted to do our own because we really have a kind of a need, and we also know our population, and we have to reach those needs of that population. So, I won't go into those in a little bit more, but if you had any questions, I would love to answer them and.
I don't have any questions, but I'm just, I'm so excited for this program, I work on the insurance arm of one of our health systems, so.
Yes.
I understand.
You understand.
Important it is to make those connections with patients and filling the needs that they may, they don't even know that they, they need.
Exactly.
I know we've had examples of people helping get air conditioners just because the air quality wasn't great in our home.
Right.
So I just, I think it's a fantastic program, it's such an amazing opportunity for us to have it here at Southeast Tech, especially with both Sanford and Avera.
Yeah.
And then obviously, our broader community around us statewide, so I'm super excited, and it sounds like you've got some excited students.
Yes, they're excellent students, I'm so glad you guys came here to support me.
Does anybody want to say anything, or, I'll let you, nope, okay.
I was just going to add, you know, you were talking about communities that aren't just geographical.
Right.
And I just think we do have such great, either smaller communities, whether it's cultural or whatever it might be in our community. And so as I look at just a quick, small cross-section, I am just so happy that you all have stepped up for your, each of your own communities to really make a difference. And I don't, I don't know that you quite understand probably what that difference is yet, but as you get out into the community and you meet more people and help more people, I just, I hope that you feel that reward personally. Because as a nurse myself, I know what an impact you will each make. And so I thank you for the work that you're going to be doing and the difference that you're going to make in so many people's lives, so thank you very much.
Wonderful, thanks for saying that, okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
All right, well, thank you for your support.
Thank you. I get a motion as second to acknowledge the academic program update for community health workers. So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed same sign, motion passes. Onto the accessibility services update.
Good afternoon, President Sarah Bens, Sarah Bets and members of the board. So I am Nadine Jertie, I am our Accessibility Services Coordinator at Southeast Tech, and I am just here to give you guys a fall update on what we are doing in accessibility services for different progress initiatives and goals that we've set for the year. So just a little update on what Accessibility Services does. Our purpose is to ensure that qualifying students with disabilities receive equal access to services, support their classrooms at Southeast Tech. Though we serve a lot of purposes, our primary goal is to ensure that students have classroom accommodations in their programs at our college. We have two full-time staff in our, in our office, myself and then our Accessibility Services and Environment Management Assistant, Ashley Vis. I wanted to provide you all an update from last fall to this fall in terms of our current numbers of students that we are serving. This summer, in July, all of our care units within Student Success created different assessment plans to see how we wanted to each track our goals. And one of those goals was to better assess our numbers and how we're serving students. So one of those goals for myself was to see what our student populations look like, what we are serving in terms of renewing student accommodations and getting new students and how we're doing that. So from last fall to this fall, our numbers stayed about the same in terms of total students renewing their accommodations from semester to semester. But I can say that we were able to reach our goal of increasing the students that we're able to support through Accessibility Services. We did increase our numbers from fall 2021 to fall 2022 by 7.6%, which did surpass our assessment plan goal of 5%. That was through various efforts of reaching out more and having more contact with local high schools, trying to do more outreach with our current Southeast Tech students so that we could engage current students who maybe needed accommodations, but weren't working with our office, and just various efforts within different classroom environments and with different programs. So that was great to see that we were able to reach different students and get more students engaged with our office through attending AAR events, going into our classrooms more, and just different efforts for throughout that last year. Another progress initiative that we have started this fall, we just ordered these actually, is some accessibility promo items. There's not a lot of marketing we generally do within Accessibility Services, other than to just share information about it. But last year, we had ordered from just a general site, some See the Able, Not the Label stickers. And those generally went over very well when we'd share them at AARs and different events. So we decided to create our own with our own marketing and branding. So the blue will actually be magnets that we'll hand out at different events or provide to students and their families. And the white, which you can't really see the outline of well on this, but the white will be stickers. So students can put them on their laptops or their water bottles, whatever they want to do. So we will have those as kind of promo items so that students can have that and have some good messaging going around campus and ask questions of what does that mean, what does able mean, and be able to share that with our campus population. Other efforts that we supported this summer, we did have various summer camps on campus this summer. Our office had 15 students with services to the blind and visually impaired on campus for our Transition Week event on June 15th. We did a campus tour, we also shared information just in general about how to prepare for college as a student with a disability and things to consider. We've done that for two years in a row now, and generally, it's a really great event. They are in Sioux Falls for a whole week, doing various different transition events, and one of those is to talk about college. One of those students has come for the past two years and is now a student at Southeast Tech, so we're really glad that we can continue that partnership with SBVI. We also had a summer camp with TeachWell that had seven students, where we discussed, it was a two-day camp, June 28th and 29th, and we discussed college preparation, exploring college, so it wasn't just specific to necessarily Southeast Tech, but where students might want to go in general, college accommodations, accessibility and personal advocacy. So that was another successful event as we partner with the TeachWell Strive program that is specific to Southeast Tech, to work with those students who come to Southeast for classes. That was another new effort that we did this fall, as we had a jumpstart new student orientation on August 19th for our five new Strive students. To, they had a two-day session with their program coach that works with them through Strive. And then I was there with them on the 19th for the morning to work with them and talk about college, make sure they had their accommodations prepared, and then just go have some, some lunch at the grill, so that they had an actual jumpstart session, since our Strive students don't participate in jumpstart. So that was a fun new event that we did this year as well with them, to make them feel like they were more a part of the campus community. I also participated in our ARC tutor training program. Julie Westerman is our ARC coordinator, and she did a full-day tutor training, and I was able to help train our tutors, both professional and peer tutors, on how to better work with our students with disabilities, how to recognize when they might be struggling, or when they maybe might need to be referred to Accessibility Services, or just different things to recognize about different disabilities when students are in the classroom. For our current 2022 and 2023 goals, some things that we have in progress are that we, in this November, we will be serving our Accessibility Services students. It will be a survey about their satisfaction with Accessibility Services and their use of Accessibility Services and their accommodations. So that will actually be going out next week. That is a part of that Accessibility Services assessment plan to better serve our students and see how we're doing in our care unit. We are also currently modifying our ESA, our emotional support animal documents. Since we do have housing on campus, we do allow emotional support animals, and we're just working on modifying and updating those documents and sending those to our marketing department to make sure that that's STC branded as well. We were also lucky enough to apply for and receive one of the inaugural STC Foundation $1,500 grants, and we will be utilizing that funding to start an accessibility employee training program. So currently, working on reaching out to two experts in the field of accessibility and the ADA to come to campus this spring to speak on, one will be more in the form of program technical standards and how our programs can apply those effectively for accessibility, as well as another speaker to speak to ADA and the legalities of it and how that applies to higher education. So we're very thankful to have been able to apply for that and receive that grant to better serve our students and our campus on learning about accessibility. Upcoming, we will also be continuing this semester, we started implementing, Ashley, my assistant, went into every one of our Student Success 100 classes to, and a few of our Gen Ed classrooms, to just present on Accessibility Services. We think that helped get students in the door and just feel more comfortable coming in to say, hey, I might need this, and I wasn't comfortable before this. So she will continue each semester, just going in and doing that little bit of a plug and reminding students that we're there. And also this spring, we will be working closely with the registrar's office to help develop a plan for priority registration. Many colleges allow students with disabilities who actively work with that office to register for classes on the first day of registration. for classes on the first day of registration for that next semester. So we'll be working with a plan to see if we can also implement that for our students, so long as they've met all of the other registration obligations. So those are my Accessibility Service updates for you all. Do you have any questions?
It's wonderful.
Thank you.
I hope, I hope you much success.
Thank you very much.
My son has used this type of service at college, and it's just, you know, it's really helped him because he's definitely one of the worst, like especially during COVID with masking and all that.
Oh, yes.
Especially here with the professors or other students taking it, the services so necessary so our students could succeed, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you for the update, appreciate all the information, a lot I've never heard that we had, so.
Great.
You know, always love to get these reports and understand more the services that we provide our students, so important.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Can I get a motion to acknowledge the Accessibility Services update?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. That motion passes. And we're on to our last report, Quality Initiative Updates.
Good afternoon, President Sarah Bens and members of the board, Phoenisha Holman, Associate VP for Institutional Effectiveness. As we continue to prepare for our HLC reaccreditation visit in April, I'm sorry, but you're stuck with me on a very regular basis with some updates. So as part of that... Yeah. So as part of the process, and you've seen some of these before, but we wanted to focus in on some of the, the specific components. So this afternoon, I'll just provide you a highlight or a recap of the Quality Initiative. So in the usually 10-year cycle, at, in years seven through 10, all institutions are expected to put together a Quality Initiative, which is a, some sort of project that has a meaningful impact on, on their community and in their, on their campus. And so about three years ago at this time, we made the decision to apply to HLC's Assessment Academy, so that's one of the options. And we were accepted, and it was delayed a little bit with COVID, and so it was two years ago that that academy started, and it's a team right now of seven of us that are, we put together this project and we just came back, five of the seven of us just came back from Chicago with the midpoint roundtable. So with our project, it's titled Advancing Student Learning Together. Nick Schneider and Nadine Jardy are serving on that team, so Nick is with Academics, Nadine with Accessibility Services, Mandy Frye serves from Admissions, Joellen Deshaun and Dennis Peters serve as far as academics, program instructors, and then Amanda Borman has joined us from the IT perspective. So it's a wide variety of perspectives on campus. During the roundtable last week, we were tasked with really taking a critical look at our project and seeing, do we make any changes, or what are we going to do in these remaining two years? So this will span past the actual visit, but we'll have a fairly significant report that will be included as part of that. So we reorganized our goals just a little bit, and the first one is to provide, originally we said just a training and development, but we want to, we realized the importance of providing ongoing training and development. So well, the Mission Possible and IE Days are two very critical pieces that have come out of this project, and we've been doing new faculty assessment trainings for quite some time, but we really want to, part of this is our goal is to develop and facilitate intermediate and advanced trainings to continue the development of not just faculty, but all stakeholders and staff. And you could hear just from what Nadine just shared, it was really, Megan bumped me even, we're like, it's working, because that was one of the pieces of it, where all these, these programs and departments have established goals and are, are tracking how they're making progress on them. The one that we reorganized the most is this second one, so we've updated it to say, facilitate campus-wide assessment engagement and collaboration. One of the big pieces, an expectation is that we have co-curricular assessment, and we've kind of started and stopped and haven't really got our traction with that, but we got some great ideas from the scholars and mentors at HLC last weekend. Tomorrow, the team will be proposing a co-curric, three co-curricular outcomes that are defined and, and a plan for that to campus. So I think we, we feel good about the momentum that we have there. We do want to establish this idea of goals out to our committees and work groups, work on building curriculum maps, really maximizing the watermark platform that I've mentioned before, and then expanding the, the sharing sessions and this dialogue and these data walks, so it's not just done and filed and that we're really using this to inform our conversations and decisions. And we're making good progress there, and I think it's just to, to continue that, and we know that development is, is a good part of it. We're really grateful that Amanda Borman was able to join the team as far as this third goal with our data management plan and supports, knowing that we've got our learning goals, but so much of that is informed by some, what's the date, you know, right now, a lot of that's demographic data, but we're going to be working, continue to work on formalizing a data dictionary that defines, if we're talking retention, well, that's different if we're talking Board of Tech at our iPads and, and sorting those out so folks have a common understanding. And then getting, we're getting closer on having some Power BI dashboards running so folks can access some of that information on their own. And then just as far as our, the, this project and knowing it's not a finite project, it really should be ongoing and just becomes part of the fabric of the institution. Our communication plan as far as making sure all are aware of the training opportunities, making sure that assessment highlights are shared and, and sharing those resources on campus. So last, a couple pieces right here is we did have that IE Day shortly after the last time I was here, and so we rolled out a revised committee structure on that day, so a quick graphic, I know it's tiny there, but just can, with the new strategic plan with Vision 2025, we've aligned the committees that fall under each of those six priority areas and then established some of the separate cross-functional teams. And so tomorrow, at the all-campus meeting, we'll be reviewing this again and then putting out the signups to get those. Some of these committees have continued to function, but there are some that are new or will get some new momentum from this, this rollout again. And then, well, I think one of, from the feedback we've received, some of the most valuable time that we spent on IE Day is we took all campus academic programs, departments on campus, and put them into groups of four and five, and they spent an hour in a room together, sharing what their goals were, what they've had luck with, what they haven't, where their struggles are, and just really talking about their plans. And we learned a little bit about the facilitation process and some guidance we can provide next time, but it's been overall lots, and that's something we continue, or we plan to do, and it was really great to actually start talking instead of just doing this. They also had some open time to work on their plans, to continue to refine and develop those. And then in the afternoon, what we've, as the assurance argument, which is the biggest piece of this reaccreditation visit, we have been working on identifying some of those gaps and holes, and so we spent some time working on some of those specific initiatives to make sure that we have the evidence and the documentation ready to provide that. And then we concluded the day with a Safety and Security Guidelines update, as that is a very common request. And so Jim Larson, our Safety, Campus Safety Officer, helped us all get on the same page there. So another valuable day, we're grateful for the time to be able to close the campus to external folks and, and focus on making sure that we have best practices with that really strong focus with assessment. So appreciate your time, and I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I think when we had met with President Greggs last week, I just shared that I didn't even know there was such a thing as like a workshop you could go to, to kind of do a checkpoint. And I just think what a valuable experience that is for you to be able to take the work that you have been doing and have an outside person or persons be able to ask you questions that maybe haven't been asked within your group to really get you to think about things. And so listening to the things that you talked about, I can tell that that definitely happened. And so what a valuable experience for the group that's working on this, but then everybody else that's going to benefit from, from that as well. So very fortunate that you were all able to participate in that.
It's a large financial commitment to be part of the academy, but we are surrounded either in, so even today, we submitted an update and we'll get feedback on that in a month with some hard questions and wrestling with that. And then in, in Chicago, the scholar we had, she's a renowned assessment expert, and just be able to bounce things off of her was very valuable. So we really appreciate the opportunity to engage in that and then bring it back to campus.
Very nice, a great opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the Quality Initiative update?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes. Anything further? All right. Can I get a motion and a second to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.